Hey Darrell.
Hello.
Hey Wade.
I was trying to change my picture, but I can't for some reason.
Oh, sorry.
Too rushed. So you're stuck with Oxford Station?
Okay, not a problem.
How's everybody doing?
Good, how about you Darrell?
I'm doing okay.
Good.
We always get everybody at the last minute in person, I think with this it's even more of a factor, I guess. Are we expecting everybody tonight?
Except for Judy and Kate Townley.
Okay.
It's unusual, Mike's not in. There you go now. Hey Colin.
Hey Darrell. And who's your Freemire?
Good evening, how are you?
Hello.
Hello, hello.
Yeah, absolutely welcome, welcome. Darrell, welcome. Mr. Adams, good to see you. I see Nancy, you're looking great as always, that is awesome.
Yeah, there you go, oh, thank you.
She looks, she looks so similar, it's amazing, isn't it?
Oh yeah.
Stoic.
I'm gonna see if I can change the lighting in my office, I don't look, look like the shadow, hang on for just a second.
You're not hanging out outside today Darrell?
Nah, I, it gets, it gets chillier quicker and quicker, so I, I think I,
With that fine line window, that, that narrow window, when it's like perfect right around this time of day, right?
Well, plus, plus the, the darkness comes much, much quicker.
Yes.
That is something we'll have to put up with for another couple of months.
Yep, well, the good news is, it ends in a specific period of time, you know, we know when it's gonna be here.
If it doesn't, then we're, then we're in trouble.
Yeah, we have issues.
You think 2020 was tough, yeah.
It is 2020, yeah, that's true, so we, you can't count on anything, but usually, usually about, sometime in December, I believe, we can expect it to start getting lighter earlier. We shall see.
Absolutely.
I still think, I think I would prefer to just go on to daylight savings and then, I'm sorry, stay off of daylight savings, so that way, at least it's a little lighter at the end of the day, as opposed to later in the morning. Or I guess is it the other way around? I should read, I'd, I'd rather have there be more light at the end of the day, because if it's darker in the morning, I feel like I've gotten up earlier and I'm getting stuff done. But, yeah.
Yeah, I hear you.
Yep, it's good for us. Well Nancy, it looks like we're getting a sellout crowd here.
Michelle just came in, so Ms. Brown and Ms. Townley will not be joining us this evening.
I saw that, I saw that, thank you.
Hey Michelle. Oh, there's Diane.
Hi there.
Hello.
I think we're just waiting on Kate Fuller. But you do have a quorum.
Okay. Well, why don't we do this, why don't we give, we give Kate another minute and see if she's gonna log in, and, you know, she's normally here, so we'll give her a little bit of time here. So, if I may, Diane, I see all these tennis rackets in the background. So is that like something you've done all the way through school and collegiately, et cetera, et cetera?
Are those badminton or tennis?
They look like badminton.
That's what I was thinking.
I really like the Woody Allen thread that's gonna happen here, you're gonna make up a whole story about me. Um, I wish that I could, I did play tennis in high school, but these came with the house. And I just thought they, they seemed fine there.
Absolutely. Absolutely, yeah, that's, yeah.
That's awesome.
Excellent, excellent, well.
They've also served to be enough of a, of a, of an icebreaker on most Zoom calls, so.
Oh yeah, yeah, I can imagine, nobody's asked about the 2002 Broncos football. There's a good reason for that, I don't think they did very well in 2002, but such is life.
That's why you got the football, they gave it to you then?
Yeah, actually, what happened years ago, my brother-in-law gave that to, gave that to my oldest boy, who just thought that was awesome, and now I need to give it to him, since now he's of an age, he can take it and get it out of my possession, because I need the Bears football. Okay, with that, I'd like to call the meeting to order, we have everybody welcome, Kate, it's good to see you tonight. And welcome everybody else, today is the October 20th, 2020 P&amp;Z meeting for the City of Inglewood, please call the roll.
Ms. Townley is absent this evening, Mr. Kinton?
Yeah.
Mr. Haggerty?
Here.
Ms. Austin?
Here.
Ms. Brown will be absent this evening, Ms. Fuller? Kate Fuller?
Sorry, I think I muted it too fast, here.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lipowski?
Here.
Mr. Atkins?
Here.
Mr. Adams?
Here.
Chair Freemire?
Here.
I would remind everyone, we do have a larger crowd this evening, if you will please stay muted unless you are speaking. And I do need all my commissioners to stay on screen, please.
Okay, certainly appreciate that, we do have a quorum, we've called the roll and such, next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the last meeting, would there be such a motion?
I'll move.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion, a second, would there be a discussion regarding the minutes, any corrections, amendments, adjustments, et cetera? Okay, seeing none, Chair would entertain a motion to, to approve the minutes as presented.
Mr. Kinton?
Hi.
Mr. Haggerty?
Yes.
Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Ms. Lipowski?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Abstain.
Thank you, and Mr. Adams?
Here, oh yes.
Okay, thank you, and Chair Freemire?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries, certainly appreciate that, next item on the agenda is a public forum. At this point in time, I understand we have some members of the public here. If you could, if you could state your name, and I'm gonna defer to, to Nancy to call them out, I believe we have Mr. Phasing. I hope I've said that correctly, and I think those are the members from the public at this point. What I would ask you to do is to state your name and your address for the record, you're allowed three minutes in order to speak, and we would open it up at this point in time.
Okay, hi guys, my name's Kevin Phasing, 3649 South Grant Street, District 2. And I guess I'm here today to answer questions about my application, I think that you guys have had for a few days, I'm not really sure what the format of this meeting is, but I'm not sure when I make my case, or if I answer questions later. I did prepare kind of a short presentation, but I'm not sure when, when that is. So I guess, to, just to preview that, I would like to tell you guys, first of all, thanks for having me. This has been a project I've been working on for almost a year now, and the reason I kinda started thinking about this is I look around and see how City of Inglewood has very quickly become unaffordable for working families like myself. And so, I also look around my neighborhood and see, you know, development, and some are responsible, some of it maybe not responsible, some of it ugly, some of it great, whatever. But I wanted to figure out a way that I could kinda join in, and how I could be as a member of the community, how to kinda change my community for the better. Because I think we need to increase housing density in a responsible way, and I think that my project kind of addresses that. I also think, as somebody that rides a bicycle every day in the state for the past 15 years, and somebody who's passionate about transportation and clean air and safe streets, I think that we have too many streets in this city, and we need to dedicate, get rid of some of these, some of these roadways, and give it back to the community, so that we can use it more responsibly. And so, you know, this is a time of unprecedented challenges within the city. Okay, economically, you know, socially, environmentally, public, in terms of public health crisis. And I think that we shouldn't have to wait for the federal government to give us a bailout, I think that community members like myself can participate in this, and I'd ask the city, I will ask the city, I guess, in the future to approve my request, to somehow help us out, increase the availability of housings, to, to decrease the cost of housing, while at the same time reducing our dependency on cars, and I think that I made that case pretty clear in the application. I, I will also say that it's been kind of a frustrating process, I haven't had too much feedback from city staff over the past year. At the same time when Swedish Hospital is kinda working hand in hand with the city and getting their application proofread, a lot of my questions have gone unanswered, unfortunately. And I don't think that's fair and equitable to the community, that I should be treated differently than Swedish Hospital. I think that my rationale is spelled out in the application is pretty clear, it pretty clearly aligns with, with, with the goals and the comprehensive plan of Inglewood. It will no doubt benefit the city, it will generate revenue for the city, instead of spending very valuable taxpayer dollars to widen roads and do whatever else the city says they're planning on doing, or at least some of them are saying that they're gonna do. So, you know, the city staff has said that they're gonna be losing a, a revenue shortfall of $4 million in this next year alone. And that's, I think, optimistic, because we're just getting started on.
Sorry, Mr. Phasing, that was your three minutes.
Well, well, I guess we'll maybe answer questions later and not, I'd be able to go through my presentation or something, thanks.
Okay, we certainly appreciate that, are there any other members from the public that would like to address the commission tonight?
There are none.
Okay, didn't see any, but I always wanna make sure, because my screen's only X big, and who knows who has a more glorious screen than what I would for having a meeting, so, all right, let's go ahead and move on to Mr. Phasing, we certainly appreciate your comments. Move on to the next item on the agenda, which is case SUB 2020-07, Vacation of Right-Away. This ties right in with what Mr. Phasing was talking about, Mr. Burkholder?
Thank you, Chair Freemire, good evening, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, give me a second while I share my screen here, I will go over a quick PowerPoint of the, of the case for you. There we go. As mentioned, this is SUB 2020 017, a vacation of public right-of-way request. The applicant is requesting a portion of East Jefferson Drive right-of-way, approximately 4,000 square feet. Be vacated from public use for the purpose of construction, constructing additional housing per the application justification that was presented. In this map, hopefully you all can see it large enough, but the three sides of the area to be vacated or requesting vacation are highlighted in purple, and then it would just close to make this elongated rectangle shape right here. That is the 4,000 square foot approximately area that the Vacation of Right-Away is being requested of. You can see immediately in front is East Jefferson Drive. Immediately to the east is South Grant Street, and then immediately to the west is an alley. If you continued west, you'd run into Sherman, which is over here on the slide. So East Jefferson is parallel to Highway 285 or Hamden as well, so you have 285 in this area, or Hamden, and then East Jefferson, then the applicant's property in this location here. The applicant does have a .1780 acre parcel, which is 7,754 square feet. It is located within R2B Zone District, and there is an existing one-story ranch structure on the parcel, about 830 square feet in size. So to give you a little bit of background, a little bit further onto the parcel, I mentioned it's R2B, Medium Density Multi-Dwelling Unit District. There is a 25-foot frontage requirement and a 3,000 square feet of area per unit requirement for all parcels in the R2B Zone District. Per the Unified Development Code, front yards are measured on the side of the lot that abuts the long side of the block. So the long side of the block is running north-south along South Grant Street. Therefore, East Jefferson on this parcel would be considered a side yard, and the front yard is facing on South Grant Street. So I mentioned that there's a 25-foot of frontage requirement for a lot in the R2B, the applicant has 20.82 feet of frontage. And even if you were to add this vacation here in purple, the 50-foot of frontage that would be required for two units would still not be met, you'd still be short of the 50 feet if you added this entire area, which is, is the red and the purple on your screen. For two units, obviously, as I mentioned, you'd need 6,000 square feet of area, 3,000 square foot each unit. And I just mentioned that the applicant does have 7,700 square feet of lot area, so that requirement would actually be met for this property. It would be the front, frontage and the setback, that would be the difficulty here. Requiring any future development would likely require Board of Adjustment zoning variances to be issued. So you might ask yourself, what is this lot classified as? It's classified as a non-conforming urban lot. And an urban lot is a lot with less than 3,000 square feet of lot area, or less than 25 feet of lot width. So that's how we are classifying this parcel. An urban lot with a house currently on it, but not meeting one of those, or both of those threshold criteria to build new would require a public hearing process. The Planning and Zoning Commission has heard these requests in the past. And an urban lot without a house on it also requires a public hearing process through Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council. This is required because of the small nature of the lot, and if you do have a house already existing on there, we would need to make sure all of your side yard setbacks, front yard, rear yard setbacks are all being met with any new development. And if you do not have an existing house, or don't have a precedent of an existing house, we essentially need to make sure the lot is a buildable lot, and that is what is required of a non-conforming urban lot per the code. So the process for these lots do follow the non-conforming structures and non-conforming lot criteria in the Unified Development Code. So I wanna talk about, within the requests, there are some street utility interference possibilities. City utilities primarily regarding a sewer line that is located in the alley to the west of the main parcel, as I showed you in the, in the plat. I'll show you the, the plat here in a minute, but this is on the ground. You can see in this picture farthest to the left of the screen, you can see the circle with the, the green lines, that is an existing sanitary sewer manhole. And you can see, as you travel north in the alley, you can see where that sanitary sewer is running. This is the intersection of the alley and East Jeff, or Jefferson Drive, right here. And this picture farthest to the right is also the intersection of the alley and Jefferson Drive, taking the sewer line through Jefferson Drive to the north side of Jefferson Drive. Now I wanna show you the actual site plan. You can see on the site plan, the sanitary sewer down in this bottom-left location. And on the survey, it shows that the,
Wait, is there any way you can make the, that bigger over there? The drawing of the, that you're talking about now?
Let me see.
Michelle, it's Nancy, if you go up to the top of your Zoom screen, you should see display set, or view options. Do you see you are viewing Wade Burkholder's screen and then view options?
No.
Okay, sorry.
I think the issue is that Wade, you're, we're seeing your presenter view, so we can see what your next slide is and your current slide and your timer.
We can see your notes.
Okay. Let me see. It's not letting me do.
Wade, why don't you go to display settings? Up top.
Okay.
Say, or if you stop displaying and then redisplay the other monitor that or the other monitor that only has the the full screen, that might work also.
Nancy, is there a way to stop share? It's not letting me click on the stop share.
Let me check. You should be able to, it doesn't give you the down at the bottom where it says share screen. You don't have the red X to say stop share because I can't stop it.
I do not.
I'm going to-
I have a red bar at the top that says stop share.
Okay, yeah, click that one then.
It just, it's just spinning.
Here, maybe this, I think I can stop it. It says stop participant sharing, but it's still sharing. Sorry Wade.
Yeah, I don't know that I can get it.
I think I might be able to get there. I've got a sub-screen that says this will stop other screen sharing. Do you want to continue? I'm going to click yes.
Yeah.
All right.
I was able to make it a little bit bigger by going, like Nancy said, up to view options and having it fit the window. So that it's, I'm okay now.
Wade breaks the internet.
I I think I did because now I'm locked out of everything. I can't advance the screens.
Would you like for me to call Al Gore in the interim? Just a little comic relief.
Well, folks, I don't quite know how to get out of here.
I'm sorry, I made such a problem. I apologize.
I wonder if we might have to unfortunately remove Wade from the meeting, like kick him out and then have him come back in. I don't know if that would be a way of doing it or not. Because if we're locked up, we're kind of locked up. And I even tried, because we've got the documents also, I don't think we can share either.
Give me a minute. Let me pull it up. Hold on a second. Okay, so Wade, Wade, I'm going to cancel your sharing.
Okay.
And let me see if I can share my screen. Share. Can everybody see that? So can you see my screen?
We've still got Wade's.
Yeah, we have Wade's.
I wonder why that is. Because I stopped him. Sorry, guys.
Technology's great.
This will stop other screen sharing. Do you want to continue? Are you still seeing Wade or you can see mine scrolling?
I'll tell you what I'm going to do. Nancy, I'm going to click on multiple participants can share simultaneously.
Okay.
And then we're going to pick some shorter words. Okay, but I'm going to click on this. Let's see if this will get us going. All right, Nancy, see if you can share yours now.
Okay. Share screen. Here we go. Share. I'm seeing it, but it sounds like you guys are not.
No, all we're seeing is Wade's.
Okay, new, new share. Hold on.
Is there a 14-year-old anywhere?
Yeah. And you're still not seeing mine?
No.
Interesting. Sorry. All right, I'll stop sharing.
Can you remove me from the meeting altogether and let me sign back in?
Yes, you're removed.
Goodbye.
Well, I did. I hit remove. He's still there.
I guess Wade, do you have anything else?
Do you want to remove Wade Burkholder? Remove.
What if you did a hard shutdown on the computer or you can quit out of the-
Okay.
Yeah.
I have an idea. Why don't we do this in deference to being able to move along and still have Wade as part of our meeting, whether we want him to be or not, is immaterial. Fact of the matter is, Wade, if you can describe as best as possible, so we're looking at this on your screen, what is the point you're trying to make on this particular screen relative to the city utilities as they relate to a 36-inch sewer and such? Let's, let's just go through, here's what the problem is, folks.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
You, can you see me? Okay, doesn't matter. The, the, the goal I'm trying to make or the point I'm trying to make with this slide here is that you see the sanitary sewer sewer manhole circle towards the bottom left of the screen. The survey would have you believe that the blue line is where that sanitary sewer travels. When the city went out and marked the actual lines with the green lines you saw in the previous slide, you will see that the sanitary sewer goes straight along the red line. So this red line in the sanitary sewer thus is in the part of the area that is requested for vacation of right-of-way. And the city, that is one of the reasons why city staff is recommending denial of this application is because there are city sewer line in the potential area of vacated right-of-way. So that's what I was showing with these two slides. Now, if the slides were to continue, you would see a slide that that mentioned two capital improvement projects. The first one being the US 285 Broadway Intersection Reconstruction Project, which would necessitate restructuring, reconstructing all four of the entrance and exit ramps at the 285 Broadway intersection. And it would turn that area into a three-lane road going both east and west, eliminating significant bottleneck on US 285. So the project, as it continues, may alter some of the right-of-way lines in this area. But the reconstruction is not going to go as far to the east as this project. However, the right-of-way lines and other, you know, construction-related issues may reach that far to the east. City staff just is not sure what kind of impacts this area and this project is going to have. The second is the US 285 Congestion Mitigation and Alternatives Analysis Study, which will look at other multimodal projects that may include upgrading existing sidewalk, adding missing sidewalk, adding bike lanes, and adding additional utility and drainage work related to the improvements of the reconstruction of that intersection and the widening of the highway in this area. So the city is unclear and unsure and cannot answer at this time what these two capital improvement projects are going to be doing within this area. The city will not know that until these projects get further along. And we're looking at probably about a year's time before we know that this area will not be impacted. This area of right-of-way vacation will not be impacted by either of these two projects. At this time, Excel Energy has provided a letter that says that no objection to this right-of-way vacation as long as utility rights are maintained for existing facilities within the vacation area. If you look at the survey, you'll see that there are overhead lines crisscrossing this parcel. And at this time, there are no provisions for any easements for those parcels. So the city is therefore, based on interference of possible utilities, both the cities and Excel, cannot recommend that this vacation or right-of-way be approved. At this time, Comcast and CenturyLink have not provided letters to the city. So we're not clear as to whether there are any utilities in this area at this time or not. So staff from the Department of Utilities, Public Works, and Community Development recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation to City Council that the right-of-way vacation request be denied at this time due to the following reasons. The viable use of the property per the UDC remains without the vacation of the right-of-way granted. Potential interference with city water and sewer transmission lines within the area of request. The Congestion Mitigation and Alternatives Analysis Study in this corridor may recommend alternative right-of-way lines in this area to accommodate multimodal transportation improvements. The US 285 Broadway Interchange Reconstruction Project may establish alternative right-of-way lines within this area as the project design is finalized. Upon completion of these two projects, a portion or all of the requested right-of-way vacation may be reevaluated at a future date. However, for these reasons, at this time, staff is unable to support the vacation request. So that in a nutshell is what all of that was being, was trying to say.
Okay. Certainly appreciate that. Would anybody have any questions, commissioners' questions for Wade? Just looking.
I do.
Okay, Diane, please.
Um, I don't think I said in there, Wade, but the packet we received, so the 285 Broadway Interchange Reconstruction Project may establish alternative right-of-way alignments. But there, are there any preliminary diagrams or maps kind of explaining what those might be?
We are not far enough along in the project to have that information available to us. But we suspect there may be some, some, some shifting of right-of-way lines as you, especially as you put in a third lane going to the east in this, in front of this parcel. It is too early for us to know. So as we start the project and get farther along in the project, we will be better able to answer that.
Thank you.
Colin.
I think I heard you saying, I believe I've read it also, what city is recommending right now is to not approve it at this time, but would reconsider it once that project gets farther along? Is that the way I'm understanding your position at this time? I'm not saying whether you would approve or deny, but you would be willing to reconsider it after those projects have gone forward?
You're exactly right. At this time, we have a lot of unanswered questions ourselves. And there's, there's a lot of things that we could further discuss. But right now, we, because we don't know a lot of the answers, we can't recommend in good conscience to, to go ahead and, and approve it. So I do want to also mention that we do have members from Public Works Department and the Utilities Department on the line as well. Conad Corry is a utilities engineer with the city. And Tim Hous is a capital project manager. And Guy Norris is the city traffic engineer. So if you have any questions further about any of those issues, they are on the line as well.
Certainly appreciate that. Daryl, I see you have your hand up. Sure, floor is yours.
Yes, I have a few questions. Can you hear me okay? Yeah, I, I was wondering, you know, at what point it became, you know, the conclusion that you did, you couldn't recommend this forward? And, and also, you know, for Wade and whoever else is on the line that was part of the the group that decided this, was this unanimous decision? Was this just something that came to over time? Or could you give us a little bit of feedback?
As Mr. Phasing mentioned, we've been, we've been in communication for almost better part of a year. We have always had the same answer in that this would likely not be recommended for approval because of the reasons I've mentioned tonight. As far as if it was a unanimous decision, yes, I can, I can say Utilities, Public Works, and Community Development have always and are on the same page about the recommendation.
Okay. So, so basically, this, this was something you didn't think would work, but worked for a long time to see if you could, there was a way to make it work. Is that fair, fair statement?
Well, it got to, you know, the, Mr. Phasing is always able to ask. We, we aren't, we can't, and we won't deny the, the opportunity to go through the process. So that's where we're, we're at.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions from commissioners at this time? Yes, Colin.
I do have a couple of follow-up questions that I think might be helpful just to help my understanding. It looks like the utilities are currently even potentially within the subject property right now. Is there a need to get those out of that? Is there any benefit to, to doing, to doing that part of it?
We wouldn't necessarily need to remove or relocate that sewer line. We, we'd simply need the appropriate easement to cover any potential need for us to get in there and replace it or anything like that. So it doesn't need to be relocated. It just wouldn't need an easement established.
Okay. And then secondarily, obviously, or reading through the documentation, it sounds like Sherman Street is part of the congestion study and the interchange study. Per CDS criteria, it needs to be closed off and no longer have access to Hampden. Is there potential or is there consideration of routing sewer, I'm sorry, Sherman to a right turn onto East Jefferson Drive at this time? Or is that also too early? It feels like that would impact kind of this subject property also.
This is Guy Norris. That is one of the assumptions is that we actually do have preliminary concepts that do expand to the south. I mean, it's not that, I mean, right-of-way lines are not just likely to be, are not possibly changed. They are likely to be changed. We're not, we're not saying that the right-of-way needs to extend into the perceived yard, but we do believe right-of-way lines will be changing in this area.
Because there's, there's a lot of impacts that are going to happen, not just on Hampden, but to some of those ancillary streets around it also.
Yeah, ancillary streets. And we're even working out with community development on a possible third project. What's even discussed is, is a Sherman Bike Boulevard. We would be making improvements to Little Drake Creek right there, including pathway improvements.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Any other questions or comments by commissioners? Yes, Mr. Adams?
The DDA, one of their projects was the Little Dry Creek, which is basically across the street of Jefferson there. I'm not sure what kind of project that would be, but I'm not, that could or could not have an effect on the Jefferson Street there. Not really sure what is involved in that. No, I'm bringing that up as a point.
Certainly appreciate that. Wade, did you have any response from Mr. Adams regarding the Little Dry Creek project? Because it may impact this particular deal.
I, I do not have an answer for that at this time, unless other, unless Tim or Guy has any thoughts on that, but I'm unable to answer that at this time.
Tim or Guy, any comment regarding that?
Could you clarify the, the type of project you're talking about? This is Tim Hosts. Are you talking like a project that we'd be doing on Little Dry Creek itself, or some, some surface improvements to the roadways around there?
The Little Dry Creek Project, it's not mentioned on DDA projects. I'm, I'm not sure what's involved in that.
Okay, I think that, that part you're talking about is downstream of Broadway. It's a little bit to the west of this location, so we won't be doing any improvements to Little Dry Creek at Sherman here. That's more between Broadway and Cherokee is where that section is that we're looking at on that project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks Colin, I saw you had your hand up, sir.
I wanted to clarify that I believe the project Carl was talking about is the, where the inflatable dam was located at the development just to the west of Broadway. Which, Mr. Hosts clarified, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions, comments by commissioners? Yes, Daryl?
Yeah, I had a follow-up. I was just wondering, you know, in terms of, you know, revisiting this after, you know, there's a better idea, some of the plans that you mentioned, do you have a sense of what the timeframe might be on that? What might change? Do you think there would be, you know, it would look a lot different at that point from the, from the considerations that you mentioned?
The, we're looking at probably at least a year.
Okay.
You know, some of the improvements may include sidewalks, other kind of ADA or utility and drainage work that might need to be addressed as part of the reconstruction project or identified in the studies, and those sorts of things.
Do you think, do you have a sense of, you know, if there, you know, it might be some of, a lot of the reasons that you're not recommending at this time could change, or you just kind of don't know?
I, I mean, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, other staff on the line, but I, I think we could find ourselves in a situation where it doesn't affect this property, but-
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Chair Freemeyer, this is Nancy.
Yes.
Could I make a suggestion? Of course, totally your call. But Wade is, Wade is completely frozen, his computer's frozen, his screen. I've reached out to our IT department. I've tried everything they have suggested. Might I suggest that we take a short recess? Everybody exit the meeting, everybody come back in? Because Mr. Phasing, I believe, is going to want to show, share his screen, and at this point, that's not possible.
Right, understood. Certainly appreciate that. Unless I see any objection, why don't we do that? And why don't we come back in, within about two, three minutes? Everybody just make it a point to get online? Okay?
Okay, I'm going to end the meeting now and we'll see you in two minutes. Sorry for the inconvenience.